You're listening to the Chad Hasty Show on demand. Good for you. Now download the KFYO app and listen live weekday afternoons, five to seven P. M. Central.
Broadcasting from the great state of Texas, this is the Chad Hasty Show. News and views with a Lone Star perspective. You can sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety, or call in at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Now here's Chad Hasty.
Good evening Lubbock, Abilene, Amarillo, Wichita Falls, Vinland Odessa, Dallas Fort Worth, down in Houston, over in El Paso, and anywhere else across the great state of Texas and beyond. Wherever you may be listening on this Monday, welcome in to the Chad Hasty Show. Glad to have you with us today. A pretty busy show that we're going to have really all week, all week long, just like we had last week, as early voting continues in the March fifth Republican and Democrat primaries. If you have gone and voted, if you haven't gone and voted, guess what? You get to hear from candidates if you're still making up your minds. And that's a lot of people, a lot of folks out there who have not cast a ballot, a lot of folks who are still wondering who to vote for in some of these races. Well, we're going to have different candidates on throughout the week, and that includes today. We'll have Mike Dolby stopping by the studio coming up at five thirty-five this evening. He's running for Lubbock County Commissioner. We'll visit with Scott Braddock coming up at six oh five. We were going to visit with Congressman Jody Arrington today. That's been pushed to tomorrow. So Congressman Jody Arrington will be on tomorrow. He's seeking, of course, reelection there in in the nineteenth congressional district. We've also got some more local races that we'll be focusing on with some different candidates who will be giving us a call later on in the week. If you're a candidate out there and you still want to get on, you still have time, just email me and we'll get you on the program as soon as possible. But dates are filling up and times are filling up as well. We'll also visit with the folks on the RNC a little bit later on this week because Joe Biden, he's finally going and doing something about the, well, no, let me rephrase that. He's going to the border to complain about Republicans. That's right. That's, that's what he's gonna do. He's going to the border to complain about the Republicans. We'll get into that story today. We've also got, oh, it's a possible government shutdown. It could happen, folks. Another government shutdown. It's another looming government shutdown until they make a deal, spend more money and, and kick the can down the road. We'll get into that topic on the program today. We also want to hear from you on a variety of other stories, including social media and the Supreme Court. We'll talk about that today. Very interesting comments made about that. And we've also got NATO and the EU considering sending troops to Ukraine. What about the U. S.? We'll get into that story today. And we want to hear from you on those issues. You can send in your thoughts as always on the text line, eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. Give us a call at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Nick, the first voice you hear from when you dial in tonight. Nick, did you have a, did you have a good weekend? Was it an adventurous weekend? Did you do anything crazy, you know, throughout the, your, your time off?
I don't want to say anything crazy. I did eat my beef jerky.
There you go.
Which, you know, that's pretty crazy for me. So, you know, with those terms, yeah.
It is your guilty pleasure.
It is, as we've established.
Yes.
I do feel guilty eating it despite your judgment. I, I like it, though.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of a lot of people like, yeah.
And that was a highlight of my weekend, so.
That was a highlight, huh? That was it. That was.
It was a good weekend.
That's not bad.
Yeah. Grilled pork chops last night.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Very nice.
Always a good day when you can eat some grilled pork chops.
Yeah. Well, that's good. That's good. Yeah, I am, I'm looking at getting a new grill this year. Yeah, that was, that was part of my, part of my Sunday was spent doing a little bit of research on different grills that I may or may not want. That, that was, that was, that was fun. That was fun to go through and look. And then, uh, let's see here. We also, even though my wife, like, just laughed at me whenever I do this, we, we have YouTube TV. And so I was, I was just kind of, just kind of seeing what was on the YouTube TV, which we never watch TV except for sports. So I'm going through, I'm seeing what's on there. Well, the movie A Few Good Men was on. And I, my, my wife had never seen the full movie, A Few Good Men. She had seen the, you know, the, the, some of the, the highlights of it, but had never seen the full thing. And so we sat down and watched, even though I'm sure it's streaming somewhere, we sat down and watched a, a Few Good Men on, on, on whatever channel it was on. But classic, classic movie. That's how that Nick has never seen it before. He's looking at me like, I, I don't want to say it, but I've never seen this movie.
I, I've seen the, what is it, Twelve Angry Men? I've seen that one.
Twelve Angry Men. Yeah.
Yeah. So it's kind of close, pretty much. So basically, I've seen it.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm sure. I don't even know what that is. The, the movie you're talking about.
Twelve, Twelve Angry Men. It was before your time. I think it's an older movie.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, yeah, I, again, it's, so we did that. Just kind of nice, relaxing, beautiful weekend. That was out there. And today, it's, it's warm, it's breezy. And I think what on Thursday, now they're saying Wednesday and the Thursday, we're going to go from like ninety degrees today and then possible snow showers overnight Wednesday and the Thursday. So, yeah, we're not done with winter yet. It may feel like it, but we're not. We've got still some winter that's, that's out there. Let's see, Trump should meet Biden on the border and have a debate with them. Biden would not show up. They're not going to be at the same place. And Biden would be a no, just wouldn't happen. But I would love that. Wouldn't that be great? To have a debate about the border, on the border, on the actual, I mean, that would be fantastic. I think it would, I think that would be very good. Question from Gary. What is your favorite beef jerky, Nick?
Well, favorite brand?
Yeah.
It's a little underground brand. Not many people have heard of it. It's called Slim Jim. It's, it's, it doesn't really roll off the tongue.
Ah, yeah.
It's, it's a smaller company.
Yeah.
Favorite, it's just original. The original Slim Jim is, is, I, now, I used to favor the, the teriyaki.
Uh huh.
That was pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't had that in a while.
Yeah.
Uh, just, or mild.
So just good beef, beef jerky.
If I'm feeling a little crazy, I'll do mild.
Okay. What about like some reindeer jerky? Would you?
I've had kangaroo jerky before.
You've had kangaroo jerky?
And bison.
Yeah. Okay, there you go. So.
They're okay.
Yeah. All right. What about, again, reindeer jerky?
I've not had, I've not had reindeer jerky.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to try it, though.
Some reindeer sausage?
I haven't had any.
Reindeer sausage is good.
Nothing reindeer have I eaten.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah. Eight zero six six eight zero two seven nine zero. You can send in your thoughts on the text line. How about this? We'll start off with a story out of the Texas Tribune. The First Amendment, does it apply to social media moderation? The U. S. Supreme Court will decide. For nearly four hours today, the U. S. Supreme Court heard arguments in a pair of cases that challenges how far states can go to limit the content social media companies allow on their platforms. The lawsuits were brought by two tech trade groups challenging whether Texas and Florida can legally prohibit large social media companies from banning certain political posts or users. Both states passed laws back in twenty twenty-one to stop what Republican state leaders considered censorship of conservative viewpoints. The laws came on the heels of the January sixth, twenty twenty-one attack on the U. S. Capitol, the attack on the Capitol, which led Facebook, Twitter, and other social media platforms to suspend former President Donald Trump's social media accounts because his posts were thought to glorify violence. Please. By the way, all the, the Black Lives Matter posts, yeah, those were never taken down. The mostly peaceful protests, yeah, those posts never taken down. Those actually led to violence. The Florida and Texas laws similar, and then they both limit social media companies' content moderation. They differ in their details. Texas's law broader in the point that prohibits companies from removing content based on their author's viewpoint, whereas Florida's law forbids companies from removing politicians from their website. On Monday, attorneys for Net Choice argued social media companies should be treated same as newspapers or bookstores, which are free to choose what to publish or which books to sell without government interference. The Texas Solicitor General argued that internet platforms should be considered common carriers like telecommunications companies or mail service that's required to transmit everyone's message. Supreme Court justices appeared conflicted. Most justices noted that the laws posed free speech challenges, but they were hesitant to strike down the laws entirely. They questioned both sides on whether the laws may be legal in some respects, but unconstitutional in others. For example, some large social media companies, including Facebook, offer direct messaging. The justices indicated that laws' applications on direct messaging would not implicate free speech, therefore should not be struck down. So this will be something to look for in the future and, and see what the Supreme Court has to say. But it's going to be a, a big ruling when it comes out. It'll have a major impact on social media sites, that's for sure. When we come back, your phone calls, your texts, we'll get into Joe Biden's trip to the border that he'll be making on Thursday. Not sure if he knows he's actually going to the border or the restaurant on the border. He may be confused about that. We'll be right back.
The Chad Hasty Show can be heard all over West Texas, weekdays from five to seven P. M. Tune in on News Talk ninety-five point one and seven ninety K F Y O in Lubbock, News Talk nine forty in Amarillo, News Talk ninety-four point seven and fourteen seventy K Y Y W in Abilene, and in Wichita Falls on News Talk ninety-six point three and twelve ninety. The Chad Hasty Show. Make it a part of your drive home, weekdays from five to seven P. M. Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Tuesday edition, Clay Travis, Buck Sexton Show. We'll dive into the Michigan primary. Nikki Haley continues to get whipped everywhere she goes. What do we expect in Michigan with big Gretchen Whitmer trying to throw her weight around? Plus, Buck?
Taking a look at the latest of the Trump legal challenges, a huge four hundred million dollar plus settlement looms. We'll talk about it and more on Clay and Buck.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, tomorrow morning at eleven.
Deal. Join me for America's first news, weekday mornings at five on News Talk ninety-five point one FM and seven ninety AM K F Y O.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Appreciate you being out there. You can send in your thoughts on the text line, eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven nine zero. When you do text in, let's know who you are. Also, let us know where you're listening from. We like to know all that kind of good stuff whenever you do text in. Biden and Trump set for dueling Texas appearances on the border this week. Reported by the Dallas Morning News, President Joe Biden and his, of course, rival, President Donald Trump, plan to visit the Texas border cities Thursday, a sign of how the rivals view illegal immigration as a key issue in the presidential race. By the way, Joe Biden has not considered illegal immigration, I, well, I guess securing the border at least, a critical issue. Now he's concerned about it. Now the Democrats are a little bit concerned about what's going on. With some of the high profile murders that have happened, high profile attacks on NYPD officers, now they're a little bit concerned. They really haven't, really haven't cared when it was just in Texas or along the border and there was violence. They haven't given a damn about that. Now that it's, now that the violence is pouring out in other parts of the country, now the administration, at least, they have to look like they're a little bit concerned. At least a little bit. Biden will travel Thursday to Brownsville, where he plans to meet with U. S. Border Patrol agents, law enforcement officials, and local leaders, according to the White House. He will call on Congress to pass a bipartisan border proposal the White House has described as the toughest overhaul of border and immigration policy in decades. He also plans to call on Republicans to find, fund more border patrol agents, asylum officers, and fentanyl detection technology. Republicans have hammered Biden over the border since he took office, saying his reversal of Trump's border policies resulted in a spike in border crossings. It has. The White House has cast its GOP critics as more interested in exploiting the crisis for political gain than working with the president to solve a problem. Well, here's what they want to do, folks. They, they are wanting to tie in this border proposal to Ukrainian money. That's the problem with all of this, is the administration, they're lying to people. They're not saying that the, you know, that, that we want to pass border, border funding and that we want to have the most secure border, that we want to have all this money, go to the border, and then that's it. That's all that's in the bill. No, no, no. This also, if Republicans were to approve of this, it would go back to spending billions of dollars and sending billions of dollars to Ukraine. So this isn't just a border piece of legislation. It would also give a ton, the, the last bill that came out, it gave a ton of power to the federal government and the courts in Washington, D. C., to decide when there was actual, a, a real border crisis and when the border needed to be shut down. It was a horrible bill. The, the bill that we talked about a few weeks ago, that was just absolutely terrible, that, that even Senate Republicans backed off of, and McConnell was throwing some of his colleagues under the bus. That's the quote unquote bipartisan plan that Joe Biden is talking about here. It was a terrible, terrible piece of legislation. But what Democrats want is for Joe to go to the border and why not get lost or end up accidentally in Mexico. But they want him to paint the Republicans as the ones who are causing all the problems, when it's been Joe Biden and his administration. On day one, Joe Biden started getting rid of rules that were securing the U. S. Mexico border. Now, of course, if you were to read the Dallas Morning News, if you were to read the Washington Post, if you were to read the New York Times, you wouldn't see any of that in there. Instead, all it says, you gotta click to a few links in order to find out what this bipartisan bill is. The administration says Abbott has made it tougher for border patrol agents to do their jobs with the river buoys, razor wire, and other border-related measures implemented under Operation Lone Star. So I mean, this, this little, this little game that Joe is playing by going to the border, it's just chock full of lies. And what they're hoping is that the dumb masses that are out there, who have paid no attention whatsoever to the border, who have paid no attention whatsoever to the crisis along the border. What Joe is hoping, and what the Democrats are hoping, is that these folks who have not been paying attention, which is the vast majority of people, by the way, that they won't, they, they just won't blame Joe. That they'll listen to Joe speak and they'll say, oh, well, the Republicans are standing in the way. It's not just Joe's fault. The Republicans are standing in the way of any real reform getting done. I mean, it's pretty pathetic, but that is politics. That is exactly what, what, what they want to do. Let's see, a texter, the border will remain open as long as Biden is president because these millions that are pouring in our country will eventually be Democrat voters. Well, absolutely. Joe's not going to do anything. He's not going to do anything at all to close the U. S. Mexico border. But, you know, listen, let's be honest, up until when Trump became president, Republicans weren't doing a, a much better job. Republicans have been just as guilty of having a unsecured border and allowing illegal immigration as Democrats. Trump was the only one who has really stuck out as far as doing anything about the U. S. Mexico border. And that's why a lot of people really like what Trump has been doing and saying. Because not only did he talk about it, not only did he campaign on it, he did it. Now, of course, Nikki Haley, she doesn't want you to remember that. See, David and Slaton does not write, is it not all right for a state to protect our own border? Well, we should be able to. Constitutionally, we're able to, but the administration doesn't see it that way. When we come back, Mike Dolby, running in Lubbock County for Lubbock County Commissioner, he'll join us to talk about his campaign.
The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays five to seven P. M. Sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety.
A tornado is on the ground. You're at work, your spouse is at a meeting, the kids are at three different schools, power and cell are out, and your home is inaccessible. Now what? Have a preset meetup plan. Share it with everyone in your family and practice it. Know the emergency plans at work and school, too. Get ahead of what's ahead. Be informed, make a plan, build a kit. Hashtag Texas Ready. Go to TXready.org for more information.
We live Texas, we breathe Texas. The landmarks, the swagger, and the lore make us who we are. We devour the tastes and the smells of our state. You just might say there's something in the air. So do your part to help protect it. Keep your tires at the correct pressure and avoid idling at drive-throughs. Both help reduce emissions. For tips, visit drivecleanTexas.org. Drive clean Texas, live and breathe it. Brought to you by TexDon.
News and talk of West Texas, News Talk ninety-five point one and seven ninety K F Y O. Chad Hasty, talking the news at the start, middle, and end of your drive home and when news breaks. This is the Chad Hasty Show.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Appreciate you tuning in today. Of course, early voting continuing today, extending all week long. And for those of you in Lubbock County, in Precinct One, one of the races that you have to vote in is for Lubbock County Commissioner in Precinct One in the Republican primary. We've got Mike Dolby joining us once again here in the studio to discuss his campaign. How are you?
I'm doing great. I feel like we've been here before.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, a couple of times.
Yes.
Yeah, you've, you've been in the studio a few times with us, and appreciate that. You've always been good about speaking to the listeners and, and discussing your campaign. And, you know, I know you've been out, you've been talking to a lot of folks, you've gotten a lot of endorsements. I know Lubbock Firefighters Association, they've endorsed you, Luka endorsed you, you've got the Four West Texas PAC. I mean, you're, you're racking up some of those good endorsements that are out there. When you're, when you're talking to the average citizen, what are you hearing from them? What are they, what are, what's, what are their main concerns as far as Lubbock County goes?
Sure, sure. Yeah, great question. So the, the biggest thing I hear, excuse me, the biggest thing I hear is the roads, the road, the road projects. You know, we voted on this thing years ago. Why are we not seeing any progress? Why, why, when I take my children to school, why am I traveling down this road in this condition? That's, that's number one. And number two, close, number two is, why are my taxes so high? Why has my commissioner voted the past three years to raise my taxes? And I said, well, that's a great question. I pay the same tax as you do. And again, I go back to, this is lack of leadership, lack of planning, and we just, we have to do better. We've got to do better in Lubbock County.
Do you get a lot of, you know, frustrated folks who are coming up to you about the time it takes to get, I mean, you bring up the road projects, but even you, you look at, you know, this, this bill, or this, you know, deal to do with the, with the, you know, game rooms?
Right.
Where it was supposed to come out months ago.
Yeah.
We're still waiting for something to move with game rooms. Who knows when it's going to be. And what we hear from the incumbent and, and I guess others who are there is, well, we just want to take some time.
Okay, so when you're talking about public safety, I really don't care about time. I want action and I want it now. I'm done messing around with it. And if we're going to bring an ordinance in, you bred, we, we need to bring an ordinance in from, with some teeth that comes down from the state legislators, okay, that gives our sheriff, our police officers, our deputies, the ability to control this thing, shut it down or regulate it, something. I don't buy the fact that operating a game room from ten A. M. to ten P. M. doesn't, that doesn't matter. Okay, the last shooting happened in the middle of the afternoon. I don't care a thing about the hours. Okay?
Crime happens all, all the time.
Yeah, crime does not wear a watch. Okay, could care less about it. The, the citizens want action, and I'm your guy in Precinct One that's going to give you that action, I promise.
When, when it comes to the, some of the other issues facing Lubbock County, you know, possible add-on to the jail, when it comes to, you know, the sheriff, and, you know, what, what the Sheriff's Department needs, what are you hearing from the sheriff? What are you, what is going to be your position when it comes to that, those issues?
So there is a misconception out there that by me supporting my sheriff, that means handing him a blank check. That is not true. And I've told the sheriff that face to face. Sheriff Row, you understand that I'm not going to hand over a blank check. Yes, I understand that. Do we need a jail expansion? Yes, we need a jail expansion. Does it need to happen right now? I don't think so. Because there are other things in the DA's office. I know that there's an effort to get some bunk beds in. They've been talking about it for, well, they should have been talking about it five years ago, but they didn't. Bunk beds and then the DA's office. My opponent says that the DA's office is staffed. It is not. It is not staffed. They are, they have two prosecutors that are waiting to take the bar and one that is probably getting ready to leave, one or two that are getting ready to leave. The DA's office is not staffed. We, I want fully staffed prosecutors ready to rock and roll. And have they done better? Yes, they've done better. But my whole question, I come back out, let's, let's zoom out to forty thousand feet. How did we get here? That's my problem. That's over the, over nine thousand doors that I've knocked on, and I'm not exaggerating. That's the, that's probably the biggest question that I get. How did we get here? How did we get here? It's unacceptable as public servants. It's unacceptable as county commissioners for, to allow our county to get to where it's at now. Unacceptable.
Your opponent says there's good leadership with, with Lubbock County.
That's not what the public tells me.
What do they tell you?
There's no leadership. There's no transparency. There's no communication. Decisions aren't being made. Projects are being promised, not delivered, in the time in which they say they are. And, yeah, that's, that's, that's the deal. That's the brass tacks.
Do you think people get worried when they, when they, when they see how long it's taken for some of these road projects?
Yes.
To get started? And then we hear about, we're not going to stop growing. Lubbock County's not going to stop growing. It's going to continue. Do they get worried about saying, well, wait a minute, you're going to come to us in the future, whether it's you or someone else may come to them in the future and go, we're going to need to do this, this, and this. Well, are we talking about voting on a project that may not get started for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years? I mean.
Well, I'm going to tell you what I'm going, what I'm going to do. When we decide, we're going to talk to the community, we talk to our, our, our subject matter experts, and we decide. matter experts, and we decide on a project, okay? I'm going to ensure that the plans for that project are ready to go when we send it out for bond, when we send it out for the public's opinion at the, at the polls. And so that, that plan is going to be like a coiled spring. And when the public says go, we're going to go, and we're going to get it done in a timely fashion, and I will accept nothing less.
Visiting with Mike Dolby, running for Lubbock County Commissioner in Precinct One. You're obviously, you're the challenger, you're running against an incumbent in so many of these campaigns, whether it's Lubbock County Commissioner or a congressional race, whatever it may be, taking down an incumbent, you're basically asking the people, fire the guy who you've hired before and put me in.
Right.
What, what is that case? What is the final, the final presentation to make? If this were a courtroom, what is that final thing that you want to deliver to the audience?
I was a Marine for eight years. I was a firefighter here in Lubbock for almost eleven years. I'm a corporate pilot. Now, I've said this once, and I've said, if I've said it once, I've said it a hundred times. I don't take the airplane up and hope for the best. My entire existence is based on formulating a plan, looking at where we have been, where we are, and where we were going, and then executing that plan with efficiency. I've done it. I did it, I did it in the Marine Corps, I did it on the Fire Department, and I do it in the airplane. This is what I'm going to bring to this Commissioner's Court. We are going to account, we are going to make every penny count in Lubbock County. We're going to make every decision count in Lubbock County. Most importantly, we're going to listen. We're going to listen to the citizens, we're going to listen to the employees. If I had a nickel for every time that I was approached by a county employee that said, "Help, help, we're drowning, we're just trying to survive. We have no direction, we have no leadership." If I had a nickel for every time I said that, I wouldn't have to go out and campaign fundraise. Okay? That's what I'm going to provide this Commissioner's Court. That's what I'm going to provide that courthouse, and that's what I'm going to provide these citizens. I am available, I'm, this is not, you know, my opponent says this is a full-time job. This is not a full-time job. This is a twenty-four-seven lifestyle. This is a calling. This is a way of life, and that's what I'm going to bring to that courthouse.
Mike Dolby, candidate for Lubbock County Commissioner in Precinct One. Tell folks where they can find out more information about you and your campaign.
Well, currently, you can find me at the parking lot at Eighty Second in Frankfurt, pretty much ten hours a day, but you can go to electmike dolby dot com. You can give me a call, eight oh six seven eight one eight seven zero six. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. If I don't know the answer, I'll go find out. I'm easy to find, and let's, let's, let's visit. If you have any questions, let's visit.
All right, Mike Dolby, running in Lubbock County, Precinct One, County Commissioners Race in the Republican Primary. Get out and vote. When we come back, your phone calls, your texts, and more.
The Titan of Texas Talk Radio, Chad Hasty. Talking with newsmakers and about the issues that matter to you. The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays from five to seven P.M. Chad's show is also digital with the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. The Chad Hasty Show Podcast can be downloaded on Apple Podcasts, Amazon Music, Spotify, and the radio on demand page at kfyo dot com. The Chad Hasty Show, all across Texas during your drive home, weekdays from five to seven P.M.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Tuesday edition, Clay Travis, Buck Sexton Show. We'll dive into the Michigan Primary. Nikki Haley continues to get whipped everywhere she goes. What do we expect in Michigan with big Gretchen Whitmer trying to throw her weight around? Plus, Buck.
Taking a look at the latest of the Trump legal challenges, a huge four hundred million dollar plus settlement looms. We'll talk about it and more on Clay and Buck.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, tomorrow morning at eleven.
KFYO's coverage of the Texas Primary Election, Tuesday, March fifth, from seven to eleven P.M.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Thanks again to Mike Dolby for joining us in the, that last segment there, running for Lubbock County Commissioner in Precinct One there in the Republican Primary. And let me tell, you can tell he's a lot more comfortable doing the interviews now and, and everything else, and he's getting his message across to a lot of folks, to a lot of listeners out there. And you can tell he's pumped up, too. I like seeing, I like seeing the candidates are pumped up, ready to, ready to fight for it and get out there. And I know just that there's, you know, we, you know, you get the candidates sometimes that are a little bit, a little bit lazier when, when running for office, but, yeah, he's, he's out there working it and talking, I know, to a lot of people. And he's, I think he was going to get back out and go, go handshake, go shake some hands in some parking lots where people were voting right after the show. So good luck to him. All right, let's see, as we look through, how about, we got a couple of local stories that I wanted to bring up. This story out of Abilene. Major drug bust at Abilene Ice Cream Shop reveals ties to the Mexican drug cartel. In twenty twenty, Taylor County Sheriff's Office began a local narcotics investigation, which slowly grew in scope and magnitude. As detectives cast a wider net, they saw drug operation cross-country state lines as federal partners trace the drugs back to the Mexican cartel. The result was a major drug bust last week on South Treadway Boulevard in Abilene. Taylor County Sheriff's Office, along with the Abilene Police, assisted in the arrest of seventeen, seventeen U.S. citizens in seizure of over thirty kilos of various drugs, including over sixty firearms. In addition to all of that, Taylor County Sheriff's Office began the original investigation back in twenty twenty, but saw it quickly grow, becoming an extremely complex. The office subsequently partnered with A.P.D. before realizing that they needed to invite, quote, "our federal law enforcement officers as well," according to the sheriff, Ricky Bishop. According to Bishop, the investigation revealed the drug operation busted in Abilene stretched across the entire state of Texas with lengths to twelve other states. Investigation also exposed routes that began in Mexico. See, for all those out there who think, oh, it's only impacting border communities, only impacting border sta, you know, border cities, it's only, you know, it's not happening in Abilene, it can't happen in Lubbock, it can't happen, these, these drug cartels are everywhere now. Their reach is everywhere in the United States now. And think about that, you're going to some ice cream shop in Abilene, and they're busted for being kind of a hub of drug trafficking and firearm trafficking with ties to the Mexican drug cartels. Bishop caution, Abilene is the hub in this area to distribute these narcotics, the price of fentanyl becoming cheaper as well. According to the A.P.D. press release, the operation involved more than eighty agents and officers from the ATF, DEA, FBI, A.P.D., Taylor County Sheriff's Office, Homeland Security, and the IRS. Officers in the bus seized twenty-nine kilos of meth, seven hundred and twenty-one grams of cocaine, over thirteen hundred grams of fentanyl, and sixty firearms. That can do a lot of damage. That fentanyl number is huge. So good job to all the officers involved in that and breaking up that, that unit. Another one will spring up, though. I mean, that, that's, that's the deal. That's the sad part of all of this is that you're going to have another, another one of these stores pop up somewhere, another one of these operations pop up somewhere, whether it's in, in Abilene or just outside of Abilene, it's going to pop back up. And that's why all these, these officers and different law enforcement organizations, they've got to, they've got to get out there and, and be on top of this stuff. A Texas Tech professor expresses anti-Semitism. Story coming out over the weekend, a Texas Tech Professor Yaro Fuentes Flores has publicly posted anti-Semitic remarks. The actions don't correspond with the high standards of ethical conduct the university demands of its employees. Flores, an assistant professor in the Texas Tech College of Education, he specializes in D colonial studies and activist research. Texas Tech recognized him back in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three for, with the Himm Phil Wells New Professor Excellence in Teaching Award. Their statement noted they were honoring a faculty member who has been at Tech no more than four years and whose excellence in teaching has been attested by students, faculty, and On February eleventh, he publicly cursed Israel, the United States, and the Super Bowl days earlier. He engaged in a profanity-laced tirade on the social media site X against Israel and its supporters. So Texas Tech, they need to clean it up. Clean up their backyard, that's for sure. We'll be right back with Scott Braddock.
The Chad Hasty Show, a presentation of the Texas Town Square Media Network. The views and opinions expressed during the Chad Hasty Show are not necessarily the views of this station staff, management, advertisers, or Town Square Media. Broadcasting from the great state of Texas, this is the Chad Hasty Show. News and views with a lone star perspective. You can sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. That's eight oh six six eight zero two seven ninety. Or call in at one eight hundred six eight seven zero seven ninety. Now, here's Chad Hasty.
Welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show, final hour of the program. Hope you're enjoying your Monday evening. We've got a lot to get into in this hour. Threats of another government shutdown. Yeah, we've heard that before. We'll get into Trump and Biden both heading to the border this week, and we've got some other news that we'll be getting into during this final hour of the program. First, we get you caught up to date with what's happening statewide, and our good friend Scott Braddock, editor of quorumreport dot com. It seems like every time we visit with him, he's in a new city. This week in San Angelo, what is going on, Scott Braddock?
Another one of these hot races where you have the governor and the Attorney General both angry with the incumbent. In this case, it's Representative Drew Darby, who, of course, you know very well from this area, and, you know, he's basically under assault, you know, from some statewide office holders. And Chad, I still am just sort of in, sort of a state of amazement at the way this Republican primary is unfolding in a way that's just not like any of the previous ones that I've covered. And, you know, we've talked about this. I mean, I've been doing this for coming up on twenty-five years and, and covering campaigns. I've never seen this kind of activity, you know, from the governor of Texas going after, you know, members of the Texas House, people in his own party, calling them liars, frauds, cheats, all of that, and basically over one vote when they voted with him on everything else.
Yeah. Well, is that, I mean, we're seeing, of course, early voting numbers coming out last week, pretty slow.
Slow.
A little slow out there, which I think has been predictable, but I mean, even, even lower than past elections, past primary elections. Do you think the, the back and forth, the endorsements from, you know, sometimes the, the endorsement of one candidate, the endorsement of another candidate between the AG and the governor, is that making people stay at home? Are people, you know, just, are they not engaged? What do you think's going on?
It's a good question, and I've been trying to figure that out. Like we talked about last week before early voting started last Monday, of course, it started on Tuesday, you and I were trying to figure out whether it would be low turnout, maybe sort of, you know, medium turnout, or maybe a little bit higher turnout. And the fact is, there's just no sense of a presidential nominating contest, right? I mean, Nikki Haley out there giving her speech the, the day after we talked last week, where she said that she's in it to win it, she's not dropping out, but here's how much it doesn't matter. People in Texas just aren't even voting. I mean, there's, there's not even a perception among ardent Trump supporters that they need to get out and make sure that, you know, he gets the nomination. Republican voters think he's just going to get it anyway, which of course, they're probably right. So, you know, I mean, the turnout is really dependent on, on who? It's dependent on Governor Abbott saying that, you know, people need to get out and support the candidates that he's endorsing, Attorney General Paxton, and those incumbent Republicans themselves who are, you know, under siege by those guys. The turnout that we're seeing is, is thanks to, you know, any turnout we're seeing is thanks to those people, you know, reaching out, you know, doing their block walking, texting people, you know, putting mail pieces in people's mailboxes, et cetera. And when it comes down to, you know, a situation where you're talking about basically local, local races, that's the turnout you get, you know? It's just, it's, it's local contest kind of turnout. And the same thing here in San Angelo and everywhere else that I have been. And over the last six weeks, there's only one place that's an exception to this, and I'm not sure why, but I do have some thoughts about it. Out in East Texas, in Nacogdoches, for the first week of early voting, Chad, they actually set a record for early voting out there, the most that they've seen. And I'm not sure why that, now, I have, like I said, I have some thoughts. For one thing, the incumbent there in Nacogdoches County, you have Travis Clardy, who is somebody who is kind of a, I would say he's sort of on an island by himself because he's one who voted against vouchers, but also voted against impeachment. So you have Attorney General Paxton endorsing Clardy, but the governor endorsing his challenger, Joanne Schaffner, and you also have one of the major players in Texas politics, of course, a group you know very well, Texans for Lawsuit Reform, TLR, is probably outspending Representative Clardy, they're supporting the challenger. He's probably being outspent by something like five to one. I wouldn't be surprised, and this is not the norm in a Texas House race, I wouldn't be surprised if TLR spends as much as two point five or three million dollars against him.
Wow.
Now, they've, they've never been thrilled with Representative Clardy. He's one of those who, you know, he's, he's an independent thinker, and sometimes he agrees with TLR and sometimes he doesn't. They haven't been, you know, big fans of his, and I think that because the governor's against him, they see some opportunity to kind of ride that wave and, and try to take him out. But as far as other races all around the state, I was asked over the weekend by another media outlet in Austin, somebody came to me and said, hey, do you think that the governor is really pushing in more of his chips in his races where, where he thinks that he can, you know, take out some of these people? In other words, is he putting more resources and putting himself in these districts in the places where he thinks that he has a better shot? And I think that's right. So if you look at his schedule, there are some places where the governor has appeared once or is going to appear once, like Abilene tomorrow, where I will be as well tomorrow. But in a place like San Angelo, he's been here a couple of times, in Cleburne, where Representative Dwayne Burns is one of the incumbents that he's opposing. The governor's been there, you know, at least he'll be there at least a couple of times before this is all over, in Belton, down where Hugh Shine is the state representative, Governor Abbott targeting him. And I think when he travels there this week, it's either today or sometime this week, when Governor Abbott goes there, he'll have been there at least three or four times in that district. So I think the more he's putting himself in a place, whether it's Shine's district or Dwayne Burns's district, it may indicate that the governor and his team think they have a better shot of taking that person out.
Other than social media posts, is Ken Paxton doing much for the people that he's backing?
As far as I could tell, not really. He's been rallying for some folks the same way that the governor's been doing, going and doing different events. But somebody pointed out to me earlier today that, you know, the endorsement from Paxton really doesn't come with any money directly from him. If you look at the campaign finance reports so far, unlike Governor Abbott, who has put in some money, you know, at least what we call in-kind contributions, whether that's television advertising or, you know, putting campaign workers into districts to try to campaign against certain folks, the governor's been doing some of that. You don't see it from Attorney General Paxton. What you do see, though, is some of those third-party groups, the folks that I would say are kind of the, the hangover from Empower Texans. So Empower Texans, of course, was the group that Tim Dunn and the Wilkes Brothers funded for a long time, and now, of course, they've got different groups under different names. It's still all the same people. You had... You had a group called Pale Horse and Defend Texas Liberty, and now they think, I think they call, there's one of their groups that they call the West, I think West Fort Worth Management Company?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Is one of the names that they used to, to try to disguise who they really are. It's all the same people who are backing up those candidates that Ken Paxton supports. So, so if he endorses somebody, it's not necessarily true that you get money from him. But for example, this afternoon, you saw Donald Trump Jr. was tweeting out an endorsement and an encouragement of voters to get out and support some of the candidates who Paxton is supporting for the Texas Court of Criminal Appeals. Now, I got to tell you, even some of the folks who do what I do for a living, watch, you know, politics as close as possible so that we can tell the listeners about it or tell our readers about it, some of us don't even keep up with exactly who is running for Texas Court of Criminal Appeals. We're talking about something that's pretty niche. So if you have someone like Donald Trump Jr. pretending as if he knew any about who the, anything about who those people were before he tweeted about it, that seems pretty ridiculous to me. I had somebody who's a veteran of Texas politics earlier today was asking me, just as a point of information, they weren't asking me how to vote, but they asked me, hey, who are the candidates that Ken Paxton, this person wanted to vote against Paxton's candidates? And they were just asking me, who are they? They were saying, who are the ones that Paxton supports so I can vote against them? So I went, I ran through it for them. I've had to go and learn it because of course this has become a big issue this time around. But the idea, the idea that the former president's son is really paying attention to that is pretty ridiculous. But look, I think I was told that Donald Trump Jr. obviously doesn't tweet anything for free. If he puts it out there on social media, that somebody paid him to do that, and the reports have been that he might have been paid as much as 25 to $50,000 to tweet out that you should support Ken Paxton's candidates for the Texas Court of Criminal Appeals. And I did have a Republican member of the legislature say to me that, you know, it's probably pretty important to remember that Ken Paxton is going to be on trial in Houston pretty soon for securities fraud, something that he could go to prison for, for life if the conviction is upheld. And the court that would be the ultimate decider about that is the one on which he's trying to elect judges right now. So, I mean, this is not a scenario that you could make up if you were trying to write a book about Texas politics, that the AG is trying to stack a court that might, you know, decide his fate, but it seems like that's what's going on.
Real quickly, there on the ground in San Angelo, what are you hearing about the Darby race?
As far as I can tell, he's probably, look, and I, you know, I don't predict these races, Chad, but as far as what I'm hearing on the ground today from voters, it sounded like he was doing pretty well. You know, I talked to voters at several polling locations here in San Angelo, and even those who said that they're open to what Governor Abbott has talked about as far as school choice, they still like Drew Darby. And they're not, I can say this without a shadow of a doubt, the people I talked to today, very conservative Republicans, you know, voting, you know, here in this county, are saying that they don't believe any of the stuff that's been said about Drew Darby as far as him being quote unquote, weak on border security. You know, you and I talked last week about some of the just outright lies that are being told about some of these Republicans on their, you know, on their record when it comes to border security, that they've been, you know, including by the governor himself, saying that some of these guys can't be trusted or that they're liars and frauds when it comes to the border. It seems like the voters here understand that Darby, and this is the same, you know, in some other districts as well, that Republican voters understand that their state representatives voted the same way as every other state representative when it came to border security issues, including $12 billion for Operation Lone Star, which of course, that's Governor Abbott's big border security operation, as well as voting for that law that allows for police here to deport undocumented people if they catch them in Texas. And so I don't think there's any misunderstanding, you know, among folks around here about, you know, where these guys are on border security, and I think you would agree, and the polling bears it out. That's the most important issue to Republican voters, and it's, it's probably the issue that most of these folks are making their decision based on, at least it's the primary issue.
All right. Scott Braddock, what can people find over at QuorumReport.com?
In-depth reporting about all this, one week to go, Chad, in this, in this Republican and Democratic primary here in Texas, we've got it all for you at QuorumReport.com.
All right, very good. Scott, as always, appreciate your time, we'll visit with you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's Scott Braddock, editor of QuorumReport.com, we'll be right back.
The Chad Hasty Show can be heard all over West Texas, weekdays from 5 to 7 PM. Tune in on News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO in Lubbock, News Talk 940 in Amarillo, News Talk 94.7 and 1470 KYYW in Abilene, and in Wichita Falls on News Talk 96.3 and 1290. The Chad Hasty Show, make it a part of your drive home, weekdays from 5 to 7 PM. Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Tuesday edition, Clay Travis, Buck Sexton Show, we'll dive into the Michigan primary. Nikki Haley continues to get whipped everywhere she goes. What do we expect in Michigan with big Gretchen Whitmer trying to throw her weight around? Plus Buck.
Taking a look at the latest of the Trump legal challenges, a huge $400 million plus settlement looms. We'll talk about it and more on Clay and Buck.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, tomorrow morning at 11. IZL B K, weekday mornings from 6 to 8:30 on News Talk KFYO.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. The Border Patrol Union slamming Biden's border visit as too little too late, just trying to save himself. That's according to Fox News, the Border Patrol Union today ridiculed President Biden's plan to visit to the border as a cynical ploy to save his presidency at the expense of American safety. In a statement received by Fox News, the union said Biden's plan to border visit, three years into his term, after repeatedly stating there's no crisis, is too little too late, the union argued, there would be no point in visiting the border now, the president's assertions that he'd done everything that he could do to secure the border were true. Remember, that is exactly what Joe Biden has said, that he's done everything, even though he took, he has taken over 64 actions to undermine border security in the United States, 64 of them, beginning on day one when he was sworn into office. And he claims there's just, these days, nothing he could do. Don't even if he were to put the proper policies in place at this late hour, he'd be doing it only to try to save his presidency in self-serving actions when this time is winding down, should always give Americans pause. Common sense dictates that as a lame duck, he'd revert to his open border policies if reelected. And they're exactly right, by the way. Biden is going, quote, Biden is going to the border now solely to try and save himself. Border security should never be about politics, should be about the safety and security of this great nation and the American people. That's from the Border Patrol Union, and they are dead on, they are correct on that. The White House has finally, by the way, put out a statement about the Georgia college girl who was murdered by an illegal immigrant, Lakin Riley. The White House put this statement out, shows you they really care. We would like to extend our deepest condolences to the family and loved ones of Lakin Hope Riley. People should be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law if they are found guilty. People, people should be, people should be held accountable. Given this is an active case, we would have to refer you to state law enforcement and ICE. That's it. This is a White House that has commented on active investigations numerous times when it's politically advantageous for them. But oh, a young college girl with the, with her entire life in front of her brutally murdered by someone who snuck into this country back in, I believe it was 2022, was released into the country because the government didn't, didn't want to deport them and didn't have enough space to hold them. And he murders her. And the White House just goes, well, our deepest condolences to her friends and family. We're very sorry that this has happened. In San Diego, more and more people crossing illegally into, not only into, across the, across the border, but also being dropped off in San Diego and just being told, just run around, go. People from all over the world being dropped off, and there's no one from the federal government there to take down names, take down any type of identification, nothing. These people are just let out onto the streets. And it's going to get worse, it's going to continue to get worse. You're going to have more attacks on innocent citizens of this country from people who just want to take innocent life, they want to steal, they want to take whatever they want because they've been told they can do it. They've been told they can do it, so you go to the United States, you can take whatever you want, it's all yours, to hell with everybody else. And this administration does nothing. Joe will go to, to the border for a photo op and that's it. And again, he'll blame Republicans for what's going on. And there will be people who absolutely fall for it, 100%. Before we go to break, headline out of a telegraph, NATO and EU states are considering sending troops to Ukraine. The Prime Minister, Slovakia, has claimed that NATO and EU member states are preparing to deploy troops to Ukraine. Our FICO offered no details how Western soldiers would be sent to assist Ukrainian military officials. Commenter said he was probably just trying to stir up trouble. Uh huh. Well, he was, he was speaking ahead of a arranged meeting of European leaders in Paris because of his advisors says an escalation in Russian aggression over the past few weeks. You've got Ukrainian officials saying if the US doesn't give them any more money, they're going to lose. This is all on the United States, it's all on you, it's all, all on us. Chuck Schumer says we'll send your kids to Russia if you don't send enough money over to Ukraine. That's what they want. We'll be right back.
The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays 5 to 7 PM. Sound off during the show by sending Chad a text at 806-680-2790. Today's markets from the Texas Department of Ag.
Well, howdy neighbors, Texas feeder cattle auctions, important prices steady to eight bucks higher. Cattle futures were mixed, February live cattle futures up 12 cents, closed at 185.72. March feeder cattle futures down a buck fifty-two to close at 253 and a nickel. March cotton futures up, close at 96.58. March wheat futures up 15 cents, closing at 584 bushel. March corn up seven pennies, close at 407. March sorbine futures up three cents, closed $11.36 a bushel. March sorbine meal futures up $2.90, closed at $334.40 per ton. February class three milk futures down a couple of pennies, closing at 1612 a hundred. April crude oil futures up a dollar nine, to close at 77.58 per barrel. The Dow Jones down 62 points, close at 39,069. And that's market roundup from the Texas Department of Agriculture. I'm your commissioner Sid Miller, and remember friends, Texas agriculture matters. Sold.
The news and talk of West Texas, News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO. Don't you forget about Chad, at Chad Hasty Radio, on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram and on your radio. Now back to the Chad Hasty Show.
All right, welcome back to the Chad Hasty Show. Appreciate you being out there. You can send in your thoughts on the text line, 806-680-2790, again, that's 806-680-2790. Let's see, on the app chat, we've got Rick waiting in. Chad, why in the hell is Nikki Haley not dropping out of this thing? Is she just going to try to go for an independent bid? Uh, look, I think, I really do think this thing's going to start shutting down for Nikki Haley, at least pretty soon. You already have some donors who have said they're done, they're finished with her, that they're not going to, they're not going to keep funding her campaign. And she also, over the weekend, really only said that she's, you know, she kind of just pointed to Super Tuesday as, you know, her main, her main, you know, move forward. She hasn't won any states, she hasn't gotten close to any of these states. She suffered an embarrassing loss in South Carolina. And then she comes out and says she's, she's moving forward. Story out of Politico, saying for Nikki Haley, the road may be coming to an end. Haley persisted through her loss and loss in Iowa, New Hampshire, now South Carolina. And at least for the next 10 days, she says she's refusing to back down from a primary fight that looks all but over. On Saturday, Haley signaled a wind down could be in sight, committing only to keeping her, keep running through Super Tuesday. Not only was she defeated in her home state, but her path forward has never seemed less clear. Even if it isn't the proximate cause of her impending departure from the race, Trump's humiliation campaign against Haley looms over the primary. His recent taunts, taunts that she should switch parties and essentially be a Democrat than to further alienate her from the Republican Party base, she doesn't care about that. And by the way, the, the Trump, what do they call this, the Trump humiliation campaign against Nikki Haley, it really just ramped up. It really just started against Nikki Haley. If she would have dropped out really like she was supposed to, Trump wouldn't be talking about it. In fact, she'd probably be on the list for vice president. But that's not what Nikki Haley wants. Nikki Haley, I think, has, has made a deal with somebody, some organization, some group, some business out there, that she's going to keep running, then she's going to go and join some board in the private sector. And she's going to do all she can to take down Trump. In the coming days, Haley will travel across the country, hitting at least seven states and DC, what could be the final stretch of her campaign. She'll make two stops in Michigan, North Carolina, Virginia, while also stomping in Minnesota, Colorado, Utah, Massachusetts, and the campaign expected to announce campaigns, events in more states. Haley continuing, continuing to aggressively raise money, planning to hold at least 10 fundraisers in those 10 days. Why would you give, again, if you're a Republican, why would you give money to this lady? I mean, you've, you've just, you either have to really, really, really have Trump derangement syndrome, or you've got to be a Democrat. I mean, that's, that's it at this point. And if you're looking for a return on investment, if you're looking for any type of, any type deal that is, is going to come back in your favor, giving money to Nikki Haley's campaign doesn't make sense for anybody, other than a Democrat, other than a Democrat and someone who just absolutely hates Donald Trump. But even then, Trump is still going to be the nominee. It's like people are just taking their money and flushing it. And for Nikki Haley, she, she just, she's going to keep going down this, this pathway. I think she's got to be done by Super Tuesday, you would think. I mean, I just don't, the money's going to run out. And like I said, very early in this whole thing, no candidate just drops out because they're bored. They drop out when the money. They drop out when the money goes away. And for Nikki Haley, as long as she can get the, the Never Trumpers to donate, as long as she can get the Democrats to donate to her campaign, she's going to keep doing it. Let's see, uh, Charlie weighed in, uh, yesterday Haley said Trump did not get 40% of the vote in South Carolina, has no chance of winning the election. Uh, say, why Chad, I don't believe Haley will get 40% of the vote in any state going forward. It's all polling Texas where Trump is up by Haley in 71, 71. Chad, yeah, he's up big. Look, uh, Donald Trump, I, I think it's, it's, it's easy to say, and again, you can go by state by state by state and look at it, or you can go and look at a national poll. Trump does have some work to do. Trump does have some work to do. He's got to shore up the suburban female vote. He's got to do that. He's got to still win over some independents. I think he can, and I think he will. But he's got some work to do on, on some of this stuff. Now, this idea that does, is Trump going to lose 40% of Republicans off the bat? No, that's stupid. The only polls that really matter, again, it's way too early, uh, anyway, they really care about the polls. But here's what you need to look at. It comes down to the swing states. It doesn't matter even how much Trump wins by in Texas. He's going to win Texas as long as Republican voters get out and vote. But when it comes to the general election, it's going to come down to a handful of swing states. And for the Trump campaign, they're going to have to look at those swing states and go, okay, where is Trump weak? Is he weak among suburban women? It's very possible. Is he weak among some independents? It's very possible. There are a lot of women out there, outside of Texas, folks. I know, and I know I get a lot of text messages from, uh, our, our law audience, whenever I bring up women who don't like Trump. You got to remember, there's other states out there that aren't nearly as conservative, aren't nearly as, as Republican, and they're not listening to talk radio. There are a lot of women out there who don't like Donald Trump. They can't stand him. They may have liked Ron DeSantis. They may like Nikki Haley. They may be Republican women who just don't like Donald Trump. And in Texas, that may not matter. In Oklahoma, that may not matter. In Michigan, it may matter. Now Nikki Haley's trying to convince everyone that there's no way in hell Trump can win, and that's BS. Of course Trump can win. Of course he can. You look at the state of the country that we're in right now. You look at the price of food. You look at what's going on with the border. And innocent people who are being killed and beat up by illegal immigrants who have crossed this border during this administration. And you don't think that's going to send a message to people? Do you don't think people are going to take, take a look at that and go, huh, maybe we do need a stronger border. Maybe Trump wasn't wrong about the border Again, you're still going to have the Never Trumpers who are out there. You're still going to have those folks. I don't get them. I don't understand them. I think they're crazy, but you're still going to have those Never Trumpers who are out there. But you, Trump does, I think, can get some of those suburban women who voted against him in the last election, didn't like him, weren't going to vote for him, thought he was nasty. In some of these swing states, I think you can win them over. It's a different election than what we had the, the last go around. Uh, some of the votes came from Democrats, and that's something to, to remember is that in, in many of these states, uh, you don't have closed primaries. Democrats can go over and vote in, uh, Republican primaries. Republicans can go over and vote in Democrat primaries. And Republicans have done that. Remember, you had Operation Chaos when it was Hillary versus, uh, Barack Obama. So you had that that went on. So it's, it's happened before. But Nikki Haley is real, that's, that's the way Nikki Haley gets a lot of votes, is to get some of those crossover voters. That's how she does quote unquote, "well," or in second place in, uh, in some of these places. If you're on hold, stay where you're at. We'll, uh, take the break. When we come back, your phone calls, your text messages, and more.
The Titan of Texas Talk Radio, Chad Hasty.
Talking with newsmakers and about the issues that matter to you. The Chad Hasty Show, weekdays from 5 to 7 p.m. Chad's show is also digital with the Chad Hasty Show Podcast. The Chad Hasty Show Podcast can be downloaded on Apple Podcasts, Amazon Music, Spotify, and the radio on demand page at kfyo.com. The Chad Hasty Show, all across Texas during your drive home, weekdays from 5 to 7 p.m.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton.
Tuesday edition, Clay Travis, Buck Sexton Show. We'll dive into the Michigan primary. Nikki Haley continues to get whipped everywhere she goes. What do we expect in Michigan with big Gretchen Whitmer trying to throw her weight around? Plus Buck.
Taking a look at the latest of the Trump legal challenges, a huge $400 million plus settlement looms. We'll talk about it and more on Clay and Buck.
Clay Travis and Buck Sexton, tomorrow morning at 11.
In reality, Sundays at noon on News Talk 95.1 and 790 KFYO.
All right, back on the Chad Hasty Show. Kim weighed in on the text line. This is Kim from the 806. We are playing right into the Democrat cards. They've pushed us to vote for Trump just so they can put anyone in place of Biden just at the last minute, and Trump will lose against someone other than Biden. Very interesting thoughts there. Um, against anyone? I don't know. Uh, if, let's say they put Hillary up there. You think, uh, they could lose to Hillary again? I don't think he would. Gavin Newsom? Boy, I don't know. I think Gavin Newsom could give Trump a run for his money. And only because I think there would be a large amount of people, part of the dumb masses that are out there, that would just vote for Gavin Newsom because he's younger. He's the younger Michelle Obama? Yeah. Oprah? Oof. But the idea that we have played into the Democrat hands, listen, if, if, if the, if the other Republican candidates, if they had been able to articulate their campaign well enough, I think they could have done something. But let's be honest, DeSantis kind of flamed out. DeSantis on paper should have been a great candidate, and he wasn't. I don't know what it is about the, about the water in Florida. You got Rubio on paper should have been a great candidate, was not. DeSantis, supposed to be a great candidate, was not. Let's go to the phones, and I believe we've got Eric. Eric in Abilene. What's going on today?
Hey, I think Nikki Haley is just a Monday laundering campaign for the media. I think they're leaving her in there not to win, but to raise money because Trump is, Trump mentioned he, he'd run, what was it, back in October, November, and he's a money-making machine. Well, so is Haley. Because they're, they're taking money from Never Trumpers, uh, to I Hate Trumpers, to Democrats on the, on the line to go to Republican and corporations. I mean, let's look at the Democrat Party. They're pessimistic, uh, and they're billionaires and they're union workers. They're not going to raise money, but when they see Nikki Haley, there's a glimmer of hope. So I think they're leaving her in there on purpose. They know she's not going to win.
Who is that?
I, I think Nikki Haley, because she's getting money from Democrats. Heck, all her supporters are Democrats. And, and I think they're keeping her in there on purpose because she's raising money.
Well, yeah. I mean, listen, again, this is what I've talked about. The, the, she won't, she won't, well, sure. I mean, until, she doesn't care where she raises money. She's done after this. She's, she's going to go to the-
The Democrats is going to the media so the media can do their misinformation campaign for the general against Trump.
Well, look, the, the media's going to do that no matter what.
Yeah, but see, they don't, they haven't had it in three, four years because Trump has been on the media campaign.
Yeah, but they're, they're going to, with Trump just in the race, they're going to get it because they can, with the ratings and, and everything else, they'll be able to charge more money. They're, they're going to get theirs. Uh, Haley's in the race because she wants to do as much damage to Donald Trump as possible. That's what she wants, and she's going to get a big payday at the end of it.
Well, that's true, but look, look at how many software companies are, are downsizing. I mean, that's their supporters, their base. And look how many newspapers and media outlets are disappearing slowly. So that's why, that's why I think she's, she's helping the Democrats launder money to the media outlets. So when it comes to the general, they've, they've got a war chest, uh, to get the word out to all the low IQ, all the low IQ against Trump. That's kind of what I was thinking. That's the only reason I could see she's in there.
Eric, thank you very much. I got to get going. Have a great evening in Abilene. To, to the listener Kim in Lubbock, I want to hear from Kim tomorrow, if Kim, if Kim's still listening. I hope she'll call in tomorrow and, and talk about if, why she doesn't think Trump can win against somebody else other than Biden. Just interested in hearing her opinion on that, from a female perspective. Very interested on that. All right. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Stay safe, stay healthy. God bless you all. We'll see you back here tomorrow at 5:00 p.m.
The Chad Hasty Show, a presentation of the Texas Town Square Media Network. The views and opinions expressed during the Chad Hasty Show are not necessarily the views of this station staff, management, advertisers, or Town Square Media.